Welcome to the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions, or as we like to say, ISPS. My name is Kimberly Jackson and I'm the Executive Director of our St. Pete College Think Tank. We're so honored tonight to have the Pinellas County School Board Forum here with our host, Al Rochelle. But before I introduce the moderator, I want to tell you a little bit about what the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions does here at the campus. The institute, or ISPS, was the brainchild of Congressman Bill Young. It was his vision to make sure that the public understood the scope of government. And we make sure that we discuss nonpartisan issues at the local, regional, state, and national level. Our goal is to enhance, educate, and engage the community on issues that are important to everyone on a social, political, and economic platform. Again, welcome. We invite you to look at our Facebook page. And now I'm going to introduce our moderator for this evening, Al Rochelle. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Rochelle when I moved here in 1997, as he was the popular and trusted midday anchor at Bay News 9. And it launched in 1997. He was also the host of Political Connections. Prior to that, he was at WTSPTV for 10 years. Mr. Rochelle retired from Bay News 9 in 2019. Al, I know we are going to have an amazing debate tonight. I want to wish the candidates luck. Before I turn it over to you, I want to remind our viewers that this is a new and virtual platform for us. In fact, all the candidates are presenting from their homes. If there are any technical difficulties, we ask for your grace in advance, but we know Al can handle it. Thank you, and again, welcome.
Well, those are very kind words, Kimberly. Thank you so much. And folks who don't know this, Kimberly and I used to work together in the very early days of Bay News 9. And when I knew her in the early years, I always knew she was going to be very successful. And then she ended up being the director of the ISPS. So Kimberly, congratulations, and you're doing a great job. Well, folks, this is going to be a very different evening. I can promise you that right now. I want to thank the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions, the forum brought to by Pinellas County Council, PTA, the Pinellas Education Foundation, the League of Women Voters of St. Petersburg area, and the League of Women Voters of North Pinellas County. I urge you to contact these organizations and find out how you can help improve public education for the 100,000 students in Pinellas County. Now, speaking of the school board, they're responsible for the control, the operation, the organization, management, and administration of the county's schools in accordance with state law and the rules put forth by the State Board of Education. The school board consists of seven members, three who are elected at large, and four who are elected by residents of a particular district. Board members are elected to serve four-year terms in nonpartisan races. Tonight, you're going to meet candidates competing for three school board district seats up for election. Candidates running in District One, again, District One will appear on all Pinellas County ballots. Candidates running in the single-member districts, and those will be District Number Four and District Number Seven, will only appear on the ballots of those voted living in those districts. In these nonpartisan races, if no candidate wins the majority vote in the August 18th primary, that is, winning by 50% plus one, the two candidates receiving the most votes in each contest will be in a runoff on November the 3rd. That's the general election ballot. You can vote early at any of the three supervisor election offices for the August 8th through August 16th dates. The League of Women Voters also urge you to stay safe and request a mail ballot by visiting the website, votepinelis.com, or you can also call 727-464-VOTE. And I urge everybody to the vote by mail because it's just so much easier. You can do it in the comfort of your living room and talk about it with other members of the family if you wish. It's a great way. And then get it sent in early, and then you'll have it done. And all you have to do is wait for the results. Mail ballots come with postage, and they can be dropped off at any one of 23 different locations. And again, please mail your ballots 10 days before primary day. All right, now, let's go over the format and the ground rules for our forum, including if a dog barks in the background here or any of the homes, just ignore it. This will be the only debate that you'll probably hear a dog or a cat in the background. Tonight's program will consist of two moderated forum segments. Candidates running in District One will ask for questions first, and then each will have one minute for a closing statement. There will not be an opening statement. I'll then ask questions of District Four and Seven candidates. We've combined those as one, and they will each have one minute for a closing statement. The order of closing statements was determined by a random drawing. Questions for the candidates were solicited from the general public through the Pinellas County PTA and the League of Women Voters websites and social media platforms. We're not able to accept live questions tonight. Now, let's get started with District One countywide candidates. With us are candidates Laura Heine, Stephanie Meyer, and Tom Topping. Now, I'm going to read each question and ask each one of you to respond when I call your name. The order for answering is rotated, so no one candidate has to be the first to answer all the questions or the last. So here we go. Question number one. What are your ideas for family engagement and parent involvement in a COVID-19 environment? How will parents, teachers, and community organizations be involved? Candidate Heine, go first. You have a minute.
Thank you, Al. So it has been four and a half months since we were in school now, and I really miss our school environment, primarily because of our family and parent and teacher engagement. Actually, I spoke with our media specialist the other day, and I wound up crying because it was nice to hear her voice and hear what's going on for her. In schools like ours that already have thriving engagement, they're already meeting and brainstorming ideas on how to stay connected and provide social, emotional, and also serve and support our students and families and teachers. But schools that don't already have a strong engagement piece, this is the time. And I would say, if there's not the ability from within your school community, there are corporations and community groups that will assist. One of the most vital things anyone on this call can be doing right now is identifying and connecting needs with resources. PTA, Ed Foundation, Juvenile Welfare Board, YCA, many more. Engagement does lots of things, right? Social, emotional, community, and the serve and support piece.
All right, Laura, thank you so much. And just so that you know, folks, as you're watching this, there's a screen that has the countdown. But I'll tell you, as a candidate, it's rather intimidating because when you do a normal debate, the screen is off and away, and here it's right in your face. So if they get a little nervous when it gets to the 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, you'll know why. All right, the same question. Candidate Meyer, you have a minute to answer that question about family engagement in this COVID-19 environment.
Thank you. So as a teacher and someone who has been involved in distance learning over the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, I understand that we need to continue that continuity of communication between our parents and our teachers. And so we need to continue working with our parents digitally, virtually, as much as we possibly can. One of the areas that I would suggest that we, moving forward, start to implement into all of our tangents of parents and all of our classrooms is providing awareness with a toolkit. And this can be something that comes directly from their teacher. What are we learning? What are our learning objectives? What are our goals? How can you help our continuity in what we're teaching in the classroom and the home? And so I think if we start providing that right away, we'll be doing a great service to both our students and to our parents.
All right, thank you, Candidate Meyer. And now Candidate Topping, the same question for you. How do we have family engagement and parent involvement in a COVID-19 environment? Go ahead, Candidate Topping.
Thank you, Al. I thought yesterday's Facebook Live that had over 2,000 people on it about the reopening of schools was an example of what the district can do to communicate with parents. But the district also has a direct connect system that can automatically call and send messages to parents across the district. So there's a way already for districts to connect with parents, to ensure them of deadlines, to ensure them of changes in plans. You know, we're going to have to be tremendously flexible. But we also have to engage our communities, in particular where access is not as reliable as other communities. So we need to bring in business community, families, PTAs, outreach programs that are connected to the community so that every student and every parent can be heard and that they all get their answers, their questions answered. Thanks.
All right. Wow, we are off to a very smooth start. Let's hope that it continues that way. Candidates, thank you so much. Here is our second question. What are your concerns regarding student achievement, and what actions do you propose the school board take to address the achievement gap? Candidate Topping, you go first on this.
Thank you, Al. This has been on my mind since I decided to run for this office, is education in a COVID-19 world is going to look different than anything that we've ever done. I believe our teachers will figure it out. But as a human resources professional, we have to ensure that all of our teachers are skilled and prepared and ready to teach in a way that they've never taught before. We have to ensure that our parents and our students have access to things like Wi-Fi and computers. And we have to ensure that everyone has the same opportunity to achieve. Now, that's going to require some work. You know, I personally delivered, my wife works for the district, and she and I personally delivered Wi-Fi hotspots to student families. We need to ensure things like that so that our parents, our teachers, and our students have every opportunity to be successful in an educational world that we've never seen before.
Thank you. Candidate Heine, the same question for you. What actions do you propose the school board take to address achievement gaps? Go ahead. Can we make sure that Laura, that you have your microphone open? Kyle, can you confirm to me that she has her microphone open? And then we'll reset the clock if you can go ahead and do that for me? Okay, now let's try it. Go ahead, Candidate Heine, you have a minute now.
Thank you. So my concerns regarding the student achievement gap and the achievement gap are the reason I got involved in public education. I recognize significant inequities in education opportunities across our county. When my children were coming of age for school, I got involved. The next 100 years in America will be what we make it. And what we must do for a just and thriving tomorrow is cultivate and unleash the innate capabilities of our Black and Brown children the way we have our white children. And education is the cornerstone of this possibility. There's a direct line correlation between race and school grade, and we will move the needle by identifying and ameliorating the impacts of socioeconomic issues as well as systemic inequalities in our society. Pinellas County Schools has made some progress with their bridging the gap plan. We have to do more. We have to expand our Equity Champions work, shining a light on conscious and unconscious racial bias. We have to have intercultural curriculum, early childhood education, so much more. And we need a sense of urgency for this work. I have that sense of urgency.
All right, Laura, thank you so much. And just reminding you, candidates, that if you mute your microphones to cough or something, make sure you turn them back on so we'll be able to continue on our conversation. All right, and now let's go to Candidate Meyer again. What actions do you propose the school board take to address achievement gaps? Candidate Meyer, go ahead.
Thank you. As a teacher, and as a teacher who has taught throughout the pandemic, I understand that the issues with the achievement gap have only gotten wider and worse. And so I think that we really need to focus on parent involvement. We really need to focus on re-inviting our parents a seat and reminding them that they have a seat at the table, even those families who have felt as though their voices haven't been heard and haven't been valued at our school board. And so I think we need to re-invite those families to the table and remind them that their voices are valuable and that we need their partnership in order to succeed. And then I think the next thing we need to do is unleash the potential of our community. I've worked in this community and business, and I grew up here in Pinellas. And so we need to unleash our community. And lastly, we need to tell our parents what we need in the classroom. And that goes back to giving them that toolkit that they need and that teachers need in order to know what they need to succeed in the classroom.
All right, thank you. Now, this is a lightning round. There are going to be a couple times when we have lightning rounds. And what they are is you're just going to give us a simple yes or no. No explanation, just yes or no to the question. This is going to be a little strange because we're going to have to kind of pause as we go from place to place. But so here's the question, and a simple yes or no. Have you attended a school board meeting? We'll start out with Candidate Meyer.
Yes.
Okay. And now let's go to Candidate Topping. Have you attended a school board meeting?
Yes, several.
And let's go finally to our third candidate. Have you attended a school board meeting, Candidate Heine?
Yes, I have.
Great. And what's your favorite color? No, I'll save that for later. Let's move on right now. This is question number four. What will you do to promote teaching of history that accurately represents the histories of all peoples in our nation? And let me see if Candidate Heine, if you would answer that question for us first, please.
I will make it a priority. The books, the art, the documented stories, or textbooks that have been purchased in our country have been written by one part of our population, which means they're from the stories of their people. Balance of, or lost books, stories, history of Black, Brown, and Indigenous people. There are resources out there. I work at the Jameson, I'm aware, the American Museum of the Smithsonian, with many resources, and data knowledge to be learned about the long walk in 1854, the 300-foot walkway, the Mount Hill, or the Indian boarding school, certainly our Black American history I'm aware of, the 16th century project, many other organizations working to make change in this area. Right now, some of our teachers are following resources in the classroom, which is awesome. As a school board member, I will be asking what we are doing to address this question and how we teach American history.
All right. And let's go now to Candidate Meyer, asking the same question, and I'll repeat that for you. What will you do to promote teaching of history that accurately represents the histories of all peoples in our nation? Candidate Meyer.
Well, I particularly am very excited about this question and the opportunity to answer it because I am a history teacher. And so I think the first thing that we do is we focus on primary sources, right? We are blessed in this country and across the world to have access to documents, letters, all sorts of primary sources that point us to what our history really looked like. And so I think we utilize those schools in the classroom, and that's something that I do day in and day out as a teacher. And so in order to make that equitable and make sense and meaningful for all of our students, regardless of their backgrounds and their history, their race, we need to implement all sorts of primary sources from all over the world so that every single student gets an understanding of their history and what happened with their particular people that is particular to their heritage. And so I think that this is something that we can do, and this is something that I'm already doing, which I think would be a huge asset to our Pinellas County School Board.
All right. And Mr. Topping, the same question for you regarding history and making sure that it includes the history of all peoples in our nation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Al. And I think I may have missed one with your last question. So let me ensure you that teaching history and closing the achievement gap are correlated, right? We need to recognize that our students want an anti-racist, and they want a representative curriculum that represents all of our history. You know, I had an opportunity to talk to Myra Patterson about the curriculum that we currently have and the proposal that she put forward for a complete review of Pinellas County Schools curriculum, including history, to ensure that it's not just not racist, it's anti-racist, and that all of history is presented in a way that all students can understand. Because we really need to understand everything about our history if we want to not repeat it.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to go to another lightning round question. And again, just a simple yes or no, and we handled that really well from our earlier question. So here is the question for you. Should charter schools be held to the same accountability standards as public schools to include teacher performance and academic achievement, as well as financial management and organizational stability? Let me read that again. Should charter schools be held to the same accountability standards as public schools to include teacher performance and academic achievement, as well as financial management and organizational stability? A simple yes or no. Mr. Topping, you first.
Yes.
All right, Candidate Heine, your response to that question?
Yes, and lots else. Yes.
And Candidate Meyer, your response to that question?
Yes.
I believe you said yes.
I believe you said yes.
Yes, okay. We're having a little bit of a feedback issue there, but so far, we're doing really well. And candidates, you are handling it really, really well, and I really appreciate it. So let's go on now to question number six. And again, these are questions that were submitted through the website, through the Pinellas County Council, PTAs, and other organizations. And they were chosen by a panel to determine which questions we will be asking for you tonight. So here we go with question number six. What is your position on teaching standards comprehensive sexual education as a required part of the Pinellas County Public Schools curriculum? Again, what is your position on teaching students comprehensive sexuality education as a required part of the Pinellas County Public Schools curriculum? Candidate Meyer, if you'd like to go for one minute on that question, go ahead.
Thank you. I am not in favor of teaching comprehensive sex education in our schools. I am in favor of teaching our students about the biology of their bodies. I am in favor of teaching students about the changes that occur during adolescence. But I am not in favor of teaching students about sex education, and I'm going to tell you why. The reason why is that many of our students are not even reading proficiently in our schools. And the last question stemmed around teaching history and teaching accurate history. And so when we are not even meeting these minimum benchmarks, why are we implementing this sort of curriculum into our schools? And so, no, I'm not in favor of comprehensive sex ed. I think that is up to the parents to teach their students those things. And outside of the biological functions of the human body, I'm not in favor of it.
All right. And let's go to Candidate Topping. And just to interject here for just a second, candidates, if you could just please do us a favor that on your end, if you can turn down your speakers just a little bit, we still want you to be able to hear. But if you turn them down just a little bit, we won't have that little bit of nagging feedback that's in the background, just a little bit so you can still hear. So let's go to Candidate Topping with the same question about comprehensive sexuality education. Mr. Topping, go ahead.
Yes, I'm in favor of the abstinence-plus stance that the district takes in terms of the science with barrier protection. And I think that, you know, teaching abstinence plus and understanding barrier protection and for all students is important. And ensuring that families and students understand, you know, the functions and understanding that, you know, this is not a topic that we should run from. This is not something that we should be afraid of. We should be educating our kids on everything. Yes, there's definitely some things that should be taught in the home, but not everything gets taught in the home. We recognize that. And it's important for a healthy society to ensure that the people recognize and understand what's best for their health. So I am in favor of it.
All right, Candidate Topping, thank you so much. And Candidate Heine, the same question for you. Teaching students comprehensive sexuality education as part of the curriculum?
So when it comes to sex education, I believe that it should be evidence-based, age-appropriate, and communicated to parents with an opt-out option. The rate of sexually transmitted infections in Pinellas County has doubled in the last few decades. And I do think we need to ensure that our adolescent population is educated, and keep them and their future partners and families healthy. There are evidence-based programs out there, and many places are doing this appropriately and effectively. As a school board member, I would want to know where Pinellas is on this, where you're going, how it holds school, to the involvement. And again, it has to be evidence-based and age-appropriate.
And communicated with parents.
All right. Okay, and communication with parents. That's really good. This next question, I'm going to give you just a, I'm going to give you kind of a general heading, and then I'm going to ask this question because as I'm reading it, it might be a little more diff, it might be easier if you address this in general. So the question goes like this. Do you think that bullying would decrease if students were taught communication and resiliency skills? You can answer this about communication and resiliency skills, but just in general about bullying. Let's start with you, Candidate Heine. Again, do you think it would decrease if students were taught communication and resiliency skills?
Yes, yes. There's been a great deal of focus in the recent two or three decades on STEM, ever since TQM, TQL, data-driven focus of our school grading system, high stakes testing. There's lots of talk in the 2000s about 21st-century skills. Well, what I think is the most important 21st-century skill is how we communicate with one another, how we see and recognize and respect each other, how we connect, how we dialogue, not just about the weather, but how we communicate when something hurts, or when something feels wrong, or uncomfortable, or is different, or we have a different opinion, or a different idea. You know, are we still in practice, we're bringing in the past in this direction? And I think facilitating, listening, sharing, and dialogue, the Sandy Hope Promise, some amazing resources, like the Hello Program, which we've done at our school, building an impulse towards active kindness in our children. Now, that could really change the world.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, Candidate Meyer, the same question. Do you were talking about bullying and if teaching communication and resiliency skills might mean that bullying would decrease? Candidate Meyer, go ahead.
I think teaching communication skills and learning how to resolve conflict with other people is essential. But I also think at the root of that is teaching kindness and teaching people and students and others to love one another. And so I think the issue of bullying goes much deeper than teaching someone to communicate that something hurts or to teach people empathy. I think that if we all were to model kindness in our schools, and I think as adults and as teachers and as people that our students look up to, I think that we can start there. But I think it really comes back to teaching kindness, teaching people to accept others for who they are and our differences. And it goes back to the golden rule. Treat others as the way you want to be treated. And so I think that that's at the root of it. And I would be a huge proponent of that if I were to be elected to the board.
All right, thank you. Candidate Topping, the same thing for you. Communication skills when it comes to trying to prevent bullying. Go ahead.
So if I heard you correctly, you said communication skills and resiliency. I think that's a good start, but that doesn't go far enough. We need to teach tolerance. We need to teach acceptance. We need to teach things that go beyond just the surface. Communication is wonderful, but really, teaching tolerance is what will end bullying. Talking about differences, ensuring that, you know, people don't bring biases and those kind of things, culturally conscious teaching that, you know, ensures that bullying will end. I mean, you know, we have students that are LGBTQ who are committing suicide because of bullying. And so we absolutely have to ensure that tolerance, acceptance, kindness, helping, helpfulness, all of those things. But it's got to start with tolerance and acceptance and ensuring that people have a safe space to talk about those things.
All right, let's move to question number eight. COVID has created the need to provide options for delivering education. Boy, is that an understatement. This could create a significant increase in workload for teachers, if not an increase in workload, a different strategy for teachers. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment? Candidate Meyer, if you would address that, you have a minute.
Yes, as the only candidate here in District One who is currently a teacher and has taught through the pandemic and is getting ready to go back to school, both as a teacher to teach my students and also as a mom, I completely 100% relate to this. to teach my students and also as a mom, I completely 100% relate to this, and I think that our teachers need to be supported 100%, and some of the things that we're looking at and that I'm looking at personally in my classroom is making sure that our, what we're teaching in the classroom is being cross-referenced into our digital platforms. So whatever it is that we are addressing in the classroom, we need to make sure that our students that cannot be in the classroom for whatever reason, whether they, you know, they have another cold or they've broken their leg or even they have COVID-19, they can still participate in the lessons. We also need to make sure that we are giving our teachers options as far as the return to school goes and that we ensure that our teachers who do get sick have safety measures in place so that we make sure to take care of them financially and give them the time they need to recover.
All right, thank you so much. Candidate Topping, you have the same question. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment thanks to COVID-19? Go ahead, candidate Topping.
So I'm sort of unique in that I have a, I have 23 years of teaching experience and district leader experience in public education, and I'm also an HR professional. And I can assure you that the teaching that our teachers are going to do this coming year will be unlike anything they've done in the past. And as an HR professional, I'm going to tell you that requires training. It requires a ton of training. They're going to be working on a new platform called Canvas. They're going to be working in it with new instructional strategies, student engagement strategies. All of those kinds of things are going to be completely different for our teachers. And, you know, I spoke to a teacher who said during last, after March, when we went completely online, she worked 12-hour days to be a great teacher. That's unacceptable. We need to prepare our teachers now so that they can deliver excellent instruction and not have to work 12-hour days. Let's get everybody ready to provide that world-class education that we promise.
Okay, I'm going to do, I have one question. This is my prerogative as the host. I'm allowed to ask a couple of questions if I want to, but I just have one after we had that big school board meeting, which I hosted the other, the other evening, which is still available on the Pinellas County School Board's website as well. So this is a lightning round, and we're going to go, it goes like this. Do you think the district is ready to reopen August the 24th? If yes or no, tell me why. Candidate Meyer, we'll start with you. Do you think the district is ready to open August 24th?
24th.
I think so. If they move forward with the plan that they have put in place, I think that the moving the 24, moving to the 24th is really to allow more time, if I understand correctly, to put all of the plan into action. We won't know for sure what our families have chosen until next Monday, and so this does allow for more time, and I am in support of giving our teachers and our administration and our parents more time to plan for what is ahead.
All right, candidate Topping, the same question for you. Do you think the school board is ready to open class on August the 24th?
Al, I think they're about as prepared as they can be based on the emergency order that came from Tallahassee that said must open the schools, breaking order before the end of August. They've done a tremendous job of trying to put a balance in place that not only meets the level of order, but they also recognize that they, they're going to have to be flexible and the plans will have to be fluid, and they're going to have to be agile and ready to change the moment they cannot break in a school. They have to be ready to shift everything online. So that new program I mentioned will be available to all students, not just online, so that they're going to be prepared if an outbreak happens at a school that they can switch to online learning. That's why I'm such an advocate for training our teachers, and not just our teachers, but our students and parents have to understand how that system is going to work. They're going to have to be ready as well to adjust and prepare for something that's never really faced before, and we're on that path, but I think we're prepared.
All right. And candidate Hind, I inadvertently skipped you on that last question as I'm looking at my little notes and I forgot to put an H down. So I'm going to give you an opportunity to also answer that question. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment? And you can also answer the question in that question, I'll give you a little extra time if you need it, in regards to whether you think the schools are ready to open again. Go ahead, candidate Hind.
Okay, thank you, Al, and I hope that you can hear me better. I've gotten a ton of feedback that the sound isn't good, but I'm trying these headphones, so hopefully it's better.
It is, it is.
So, good, okay, wonderful. So I'm glad you asked this question that centered around teachers because I feel like we have talked and need to talk extensively around supporting students and families and how about our teachers. So I would approach this in very much the same way that I've approached my work in public education. I would ask them, you know, now, I would ask them now while we're planning for opening, I would ask them a week or two into it, I said a handful of weeks into it, there should be maybe a portal for feedback, questions, needs. I would communicate with them, trust them, ask them what they need and do that. Because what we need to do most is not assume what it is our teachers need to help their students, but ask them, ask them, trust them, support them.
So you think, you do think that the schools are ready to open then on August 24th?
That's the second question. I was answering your first question.
Okay, go ahead. Do you think they're open on the 24th?
Yes, okay. So on the 24th, you know, when it comes to COVID, I have three things, health, learning, funding. And in health, we have to watch the numbers. We have to make decisions first and foremost on health. On learning, we have to provide tough instructions and fight this interrupted learning environment. And on funding, I'm concerned about our speech impact to state and county funding. We will be profitable about certainly in six months, a year from now. If I were to vote today with the cases on the rise, based on my close concern of health, I would note that a fourth quarter being 100% for school. And still sticking with these, with these delays for the purposes of allowing additional training readiness for our teachers as well as equipping our students and families to be as prepared as possible to provide the most rigorous academic experience we can in this virtual environment. So if we were to do that, yes, I believe we can 100% be ready for the school.
Okay, now candidates, we're going to give you time to catch your breath because of the, the order for the closing statements are going to be Hind, Meyer, and Topping. So I'm going to give Laura just a second to catch their breath there. And just remind you folks that this, that all these names will be appearing on your ballot because District One is the at-large contest in this particular case, and that better be right, and if I'm wrong, just send me a note down here in the screen, but I'm pretty sure that's correct. So let's get back to our candidates now. Now you have one minute to do, give me your best sales pitch on possible as to why you think you're the best person for this job. And we're going to go back to candidate Hind right now for her one-minute closing statement. Go ahead, Laura.
As a parent with two young students in our public schools, I have shown up. I have listened, I have worked, I have learned a great deal. I know and I have advocated around many of the issues of today, and I live them as a parent with my two young kids in our schools. I'm committed to equity, access, and excellence in our schools. I'm committed to our teachers, committed to thriving teachers equal thriving classrooms, and have shown that in my work, which I believe is why I'm endorsed by our Teachers Association. I'm committed to Pinellas County Schools shifting from a database mindset to a strengths-based whole-child mindset that restores the love of teaching, the love of learning, and creating curiosity that lasts a lifetime. As a veteran, I have demonstrated my absolute commitment to public service. As an executive, I have experience in large, complex systems and finances. And as a parent with two young children in Pinellas Schools now, I will not settle for less than excellence for all of our schools. I'm Laura Hind, and I'm asking for your vote for Pinellas County.
All right, Laura, thank you so much. Now candidate Stephanie Meyer, you now have an opportunity to talk to us for a minute about why you think you're the best person for this District One position. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm a Pinellas native. I grew up here. I attended Pinellas County Schools, public schools, my whole entire academic career. I'm a graduate of St. Petersburg College. I went back to college later on in life. I was somebody who sat in the same seat many of your, your children are in today and, and later on in life went back to college and later in life also found my place, which is in education. I spent 17 years in the business world, most recently working for Procter and Gamble. I worked with our large and small businesses in our community here, and I found my place in education and my passion and my calling in education. I'm now a teacher. I'm the only teacher, current teacher in this race. I understand and I stand with you, teachers, parents, students, because I have taught with you alongside of you. I have taught your students, and I am willing to work very hard for you every single day. My entire platform is about putting your children first, and I hope to earn your vote on or before August 18th. Thank you.
All right, Stephanie, and now we go to candidate Tom Topping. Tom, you have one minute to talk to us about why you think you're the best candidate for District One at large. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Al, and thank you to everyone watching. My name is Tom Topping, and I'm the best choice for Pinellas County School Board, District One. Why? Well, I'm passionate about kids and about learning. I have the education, experience, vision, and executive presence to be ready on day one. There will be no learning curve when implementing my vision of guaranteeing equity and access for all students, closing the achievement gap for good, ensuring excellent teaching in a post-COVID-19 educational system, and protecting the health and safety of all stakeholders. I recognize that budgeting and policymaking can change lives and provide opportunities for all of Pinellas County students. I've devoted 23 years of my life to public school education as a teacher, coach, and school district leader before starting my own business. I taught dropout prevention in ESE, in elementary, middle, and high school. I've seen it all. I earned a bachelor's degree in education and a master's in human resources. I'm qualified to be your District One School Board member, and let's get to the future first.
All right, well, that's the candidates that you have for District One. District One candidates, thank you so much, and we hope that we, the minor garbling that occurs, and by the way, we're having this discussion about it, oftentimes it occurs because sometimes microphones have an automatic gain on them, and if you talk a little too loud, the automatic gain clips you off a little, and it's also based on, believe it or not, how many people are using the Wi-Fi in your neighborhood. So I thought we were able to do pretty good tonight and able to understand all the candidates and their statements. And I also urge you to go to all of their websites, make sure you get a rundown and don't forget to vote, and ask a lot of questions, folks. As a journalist, that's what I do. As a voter, that's what you should be doing too as well, to make sure that you are up on this very, very important race. That's District One for the Pinellas County School Board. All right, we continue on right now. Now we're going to do two districts in one. We're going to talk about District Number Four and District Number Seven. Now in your ballots, if you live in these districts, those will be the areas that you will vote. If you don't live in that district, you won't be voting for any of these particular candidates. But if you're in Districts Four and District Seven, and that'll be clearly marked on your ballot, you'll be voting for one of these individuals. And again, that, that if nobody gets 50% plus one, then there will be a runoff election that'll occur, Mac Daddy of all elections, on November the 3rd. So going to be very interesting along the way. All right, we're going to try to get going right now. Now I think we have all of the candidates that are there. If we don't, here's what we're going to do, and this is just a way to talk to my, my people who are texting me, we'll go ahead and start, and if we are unable to get this one candidate on, just text me on the right-hand side of the screen here, and we'll try to figure out how to get that person back in the mix of things. So candidates for District Four and District Seven. With us tonight is Eileen Long on District Four. She's the incumbent. Her opponent, Chris Hardman, chose not to participate. Also with us tonight are District Seven candidates, and those are Caprice Edmund, Corey Givens Jr., Sharon Jackson, and Carl Nurse. Now again, we've combined these two together because we thought Ellen might get kind of lonely if she was the only candidate trying to answer all of our questions, so we're going to put her in the mix here. But again, that, just remember that Eileen Long is District Four, and all of the other candidates are in District Seven. All right, candidates, make sure that you have your microphones and your cameras turned on, okay? And usually the way that's done is on your screen, you look in the lower part of the screen, and you'll see a microphone, and if it has an X over it, it means your microphone is turned off. You click on, and you ought to be all right. And if perchance, the video, we will do our best to also talk to that candidate, but right now I'm getting the thumbs up from everybody, so it's all good. So let's get this show on the road. Now again, I will read each question and then ask each one of you to respond when I call your name. The order for answering is rotated so that no one candidate has to be the first to answer all the questions or the last to answer the questions. So here we go. Question number one. In moving to virtual learning last spring, we saw firsthand that many students didn't have the tools for online learning. Please explain how you would work to create equity in the virtual learning space. Candidate Edmund, you now have one minute to answer that question. Go ahead.
As a current educator, parent, and actively involved community member, I understand the challenges that many parents, including myself, faced. What I would like to see that we move forward with is providing options that include not only just technology, but paper-based. As a guardian at Lightem, I had to connect my, the child that I service or advocate for, connect with his teacher and find another method of learning because digital learning wasn't meeting his needs. Something else that I hope that the district advocates or continue to work on is making sure that every family has access to Wi-Fi as well as the technology, if that's something they're interested in. If not, please provide them with other resources that best meets their needs.
All right, thank you. Same question now to candidate Corey Givens Jr. Again, explain how you would work to create equity in the virtual learning space. Candidate Givens, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruchel. Well, education as we know it, for one, has changed forever. The traditional brick-and-mortar classroom has now become a thing of the past. Due to COVID-19, some students will return to the traditional classroom setting and some students won't, but we must face the harsh realities of what we have learned from this past semester, and that's that not every student has access to it. But as educators and as school board members, we must ensure that the access is granted, and that includes connecting them to all sorts of resources, including Wi-Fi. So whether we're working with our partners at Spectrum or whether we're working with our partners at the county level to ensure that CARES Act funding is directed towards making sure that every student, not just some students in some grade levels, but that every student has access to a take-home computer or take-home tablet. We must also make sure that we work with our local social workers to ensure that students who are working from home or learning at home are not experiencing trauma or abuse.
All right, thank you so much. Candidate Jackson, the same question for you. Please explain how you would work to create equity in the virtual learning space. Candidate Jackson, you have one minute.
Yes, there have been studies that show that there are disparities and inequities based on socioeconomic levels and achievement gaps. So what I would do is to encourage the district to form partnerships between the communities and schools to help provide internet support to families. Also, ensure that funding is properly appropriated so that each family can have more than one computer per family, because sometimes there's more than one child enrolled in a school, and they often need additional support there. Provide training for parents so that they can help support their children and provide a helpline for parents and students who may have questions. So I think along with all of those strategies, it will help reduce the disparity.
All right, candidate Jackson, thank you so much. All right, candidate Long, and just again to remind you, candidate Long is running in District Four. The other candidates are running in District Seven. Candidate Long, go ahead. Eileen, can you make sure that your microphone is turned on? I'm looking back at my host to make sure that it's either on our end or your end. Can you make sure that your microphone is still turned on for us? Okay, are we, I'll tell you what we're going to do. Let's, let's go on to, we're going to go on to candidate Nurse, and hopefully through the texting back and forth, we'll get Eileen Long back on. So candidate Nurse, again for you. Please explain how you would work to create equity in the virtual learning space. Go ahead, you have a minute.
Well, I think the school system is going through a learning process. I mean, one of the things that we learned in the spring was that an unstructured virtual school system did not work for lots of them. was that an unstructured virtual school system did not work for lots of folks. And so this time, most of the students who go virtual will be in a much more structured system that looks much more like the traditional classroom with 45 minutes and breaks and that kind of thing. So I think that's one of the things that we do. We've purchased or have on order computers for 42,000 computers, purchased hotspots. The only good thing that I see coming out of this is that it's forcing us to address the digital divide that is a class divide more than anything else. And so I am optimistic that we will be, that we will keep learning, learning in terms of how teaching works and what the technological issues are. And together, I think we'll make
All right, thank you so much. And I'm asking my host, is candidate Long able to join us yet? And if not, hopefully they'll keep working on that issue. All right, so let's go on to a lightning round question. And this is just going to be a very quickie and we'll work it this way. I'll ask the question and it's a simple yes or no. And we don't elaborate, just simply yes or no, and we'll go down the line and see what happens. So have you attended a school board meeting? Now just let me step back a little bit. These are questions that were submitted to us from the PTA and also from a couple of other sources. So these are questions that they want answered and some of these are very critical to them. So let's get this one right now. It says, have you attended a school board meeting? And we're going to start with you, candidate Nurse.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Now let's go to candidate Edmund. Have you attended a school board meeting?
Yes.
All right, candidate Givens, have you gone to a school board meeting?
Yes, I have, and workshops.
Okay, and candidate Jackson, have you attended a school board meeting?
Yes, and workshops.
And workshops too. And is candidate Long with us yet? Okay, we're still working out on that issue. All right, let's go on to our third question now. And this one goes like this. What is your position on teaching students comprehensive sexuality education as a required part of the Pinellas County Public Schools curriculum? We're going to start with you, candidate Nurse. Comprehensive sexuality education, what do you think? You have a minute.
But you know, I'm old enough that when I was young, sex couldn't kill you. And today it can. And so I think you teach science and health and it has to be age-appropriate because obviously at a certain age, your kids don't need to know things. In a perfect world, all the parents would teach their children and we would all be safe. We would not have an explosion of an aerial disease, but we do. And so it is, it is critical that we, that we teach children how to protect themselves from disease and from abuse. And so, yes, I think, I think you teach the children based upon the age that they are and it'll, it'll mean that we're going to have healthier, well-rounded children. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Candidate Edmund, same question. Comprehensive sexuality education for Pinellas County Schools curriculum. What do you think? You have a minute, candidate Edmund.
I support comprehensive sex ed. My work with children for over the past 18 years has taught me that a lot of things that we would expect for our children to learn outside of our schools, it doesn't occur. So again, I would wholeheartedly support this initiative, but also ask that it's evidence-based and that parents have an option to opt out, as well as that it's age-appropriate. Thank you.
All right, candidate Givens, same question for you. Comprehensive sexuality education is a part of the curriculum. What do you think? You've got a minute.
I do support it. I believe that times have changed. You know, the old way of teaching abstinence is the answer is no longer the only way. So I support comprehensive, inclusive, evidence-based, developmentally, age-appropriate sex education in Pinellas County with the option for parents to opt out if they so choose.
All right, and candidate Jackson, the same question to you. Do you think you should support sexual education as part of the regular curriculum? What is your position on teaching that? Go ahead, you have a minute.
Yes, absolutely. I do support a comprehensive human sexuality program, which the district does have. It should be evidence-based, it should be comprehensive, it should be age-appropriate. And the curriculum should be communicated to parents with an option to opt out of it. So I, yes, I totally support it. It's necessary for safety and just for our children to understand the overall risk factors. And we need to provide that kind of support.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to our next question. We're still working with Eileen Long and as a way to talk, if we find that we cannot reestablish communication with her, we'll just give her a shot at the end to make sure that she can get some kind of introductory statement and some kind of position rather than having to go through all these questions all over again. I'm sure she would appreciate that. So let's go on to question number four. Do you think that bullying would decrease if students were taught communication skills? And we can answer this as well as just talking about bullying in general. And we're going to start out with candidate Jackson. What do you think about bullying? Would it decrease if students were taught better communication skills? Ms. Jackson, you have one minute.
I think that the two go hand in hand. But we also need to encourage or teach kindness, model kindness, respect. I'm a high proponent of teaching tolerance and acceptance and teaching the kids about understanding differences. And when students have problems, they need to understand where they can go and feel safe and talk about whatever issues that may be occurring in their lives. So we teach tolerance as well, have a safe place. And we model acceptance, peace, kindness, and how to treat each other. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go to candidate Nurse right now and ask that same question. Do you think that bullying would decrease if students were taught communication skills? Go ahead, Mr. Nurse.
I do. Now ironically, I find that the social, social media is actually making people meaner. Most of, most of what you see on social media is mean and of course, kids are very active in that. But I, but I do think that we need to do a better job getting kids to appreciate differences, to, to teach kindness. You know, I never did something to somebody that I regretted. And, and you know, one of the things I often find is that bullies are terribly insecure and, and that sometimes you have to deal with, you know, what is, what is the problem that they're having in the background? And, and so sometimes the social workers need to work with the bullies. But yes, one of the jobs of school is to teach socialization skills. And this is about, this is partly, this is about letting kids understand that the world is full of all kinds of different people and we need to, and we need to leave each other, give each other space. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Nurse, thank you so much. Candidate Edmund, you have that same opportunity to answer that. Do you think that bullying would decrease if they were taught communication skills? Go ahead, you have a minute.
Yes, bullying would decrease if our students were taught better communication skills. But there's a lot more involved. We need to begin addressing the needs of the whole child. By addressing the needs of the whole child, some of the challenges that our students are facing that leads to bullying or misbehaving will be addressed. And what whole child learning calls for is utilizing or understanding the social, emotional components and teaching skills to our students. This is both physical, mental health because we all know that once a student's basic needs are met, they will thrive. They will rise to the occasion and learned, and learn. We will be able to reduce some of the barriers and that lead to bullying. Thank you.
All right, and I don't know if, Mr. Givens, if you can hear me right now. I'm not sure if your phone call just ended or you're listening and you don't realize that it's ended. If you could call back in, again, we would really appreciate it. If not, we will continue and we will move on to our next question. But again, we're trying to get, see if Mr. Givens wants to, to rejoin us. So let's go on to question number five. And this is a lightning round question again, just a yes or no will do. Pinellas County voters will get a chance in November to vote on a referendum to continue the school district special property tax that bolsters teacher pay and arts programs. Do you support that referendum? And let's start out with just a yes or no from candidate Jackson. Do you support that referendum?
Yes, if you can hear me.
Yes, okay. Good, and let's go. My sign fell down behind me, folks, that's all right. Let's go to candidate Nurse. Do you support that referendum to continue the special property tax?
Yes, happily.
And candidate Edmund, the same question. Do you support that?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great. I'm an arts person, so you'd better all say yes, right? All right, where are we? Question number six. How would you work to correct racial inequity within the school system and increase student achievement levels affected by racial and economic disparities? Again, how would you work to correct racial inequity within the school system and increase student achievement levels affected by racial and economic disparities? Candidate Edmund, you've got a minute to answer that question.
As a current equity champion for Pinellas County Schools, I understand that we have started some of this work. What I would like to see that we do better is that we make equity and culturally relevant instruction, professional, professional development mandatory for all. This is one way that we will be able to address the implicit bias or racism that is occurring within our schools and try and get a level playing field for our educators and our students. We need to have more diverse material. We need to make sure that everyone realizes that our district is diverse and each student has value. And by understanding the needs of the whole child, we'll be able to get a step further in addressing the, the achievement gap. We will also have an opportunity to embrace our diversity and engage our family, our families and community as well as improve recruitment and retention rates within our county by just touching the surface and improving equity in education.
All right, great, thank you for that answer. Again, let's go to candidate Jackson right now. How would you correct racial inequity within the school system based on the economic disparities that exist? Candidate Jackson, you have one minute.
All right, thank you. Racism is alive and well and it is totally embedded in our educational systems. It's found everywhere in society. It is a systemic issue. Our standards, policies, and practices and goals can be changed to address racism in our schools. But the most difficult one is changing the culture. This requires a mindset change. So I know the district has implemented some strategies in place to try to address mindset issues. Until we figure out a really good way to change the hearts of people, the practices will continue. There's a disconnect there. Successes have been achieved and I will continue to support the district's efforts. But I ask, is it working? Why or why not? Racism is everybody's problem. Accountability must be present. The untimely day of Mr.
Ms. Jackson, we're having, we're having a little problem because we heard your audio just fine, but we're not. Your camera is somehow turned off. So if you can figure out what happened that might have turned your camera off. This is a whole new era that we're living in, folks. And sometimes computers don't exactly work the way that we would like them to work. So Ms. Jackson, if you can go back and, and get that to work. So Mr. Givens is rejoining us back and, and Mr. Givens, I want to give you a chance to just catch up with us. What would you do to correct racial inequity within the school system and increase student achievement levels affected by racial and economic disparities? Mr. Givens, go ahead and answer that if you would.
Thank you, and I apologize for that connectivity issue. First of all, I'd make sure that there was culturally competent curriculum and also a reflection of those students in front of the classroom with teachers who look like them. So my focus would be on recruitment and retaining teachers from across the board and across the world, world-class teachers. I also make sure that there's a reflection of students in the curriculum, be it African-American, Hispanic, or Native American students. I want to make sure that there's a connection of their shared experiences with what they're learning. And lastly, I'll make room for their peers to self-identify themselves and to celebrate their difference. Bullying, that's a great reason that there's bullying a lot.
All right, thank you. We, and check your camera one more time, Mr. Givens. We got the last part of your answer, so we're good there, but you might want to check out that connection again. We're, we're working back and forth with the message board here and our tech people trying to work this out for everybody. Mr. Nurse, if you could answer that question for us again about correcting racial inequities within the school system. Go ahead, you have a minute.
Well, we have both racial and economic inequities. We have the heaviest concentration of wealth at the top in America, in 100 years right now. In our, in this, this quarter of the district, we have 19 of the elementary schools have at least 40% of the students living in poverty. So it's a, it's a more widespread problem than we, than we acknowledge. And so first you have to acknowledge it. And then I think part of it, I think of it as a, as a 100-yard dash where we've got about 40% of the kids have to do 130 yards. And so we have to recognize that, that the kids who start off farther behind, we need, are going to need more resources if we're going to, if they're going to win the race. And so one of the things that we need to do is, is invest more heavily in the schools with concentration of poverty. In terms of the racial part, part of it is about the history we were talking about where we need to celebrate our differences and, and as we've come from many lands, as I came from another land.
All right, Nurse, Mr. Nurse, thank you so much. Let's go to candidate Edmund again right now. How would you propose Pinellas County School System prepare students for post-high school education or, or, excuse me? Just give me one second, I'm trying to figure out if we lost something here. Okay, let's go ahead and go to question number seven now. Excuse me for interrupting myself, you're just checking on my list. So how would you propose, this is a new set of questions for us now. How would you propose that Pinellas County School System prepare students for post-high school education or work? Again, how would you propose Pinellas County School System prepare students for post-high school education or work? Mr. Nurse, we're going to start with you on that one.
Yeah, I love this question because it's part of what I think is most important. A child cannot earn a middle-class living with a high school education. We really have left aside the two-thirds of the students who are not going to a four-year college. And so from my perspective, what we need to do is to really connect these kids, some of it in high school courses, some of it with a plan for what's after high school so that they will, can learn the skills to earn a middle-class living. Some of that would be certifications, apprenticeships, internships, just to use the illustration of, in nursing, a CNA makes 24,000, an LPN makes 44,000, and, and an RN makes 67,000 in this county average. Even the middle one is a middle-class living and that's a year and a half of college. So there are hundreds of opportunities for kids to earn a middle-class living, but we need to connect those kids one-on-one with a path for the future.
All right, Mr. Nurse, thank you so much. Candidate Edmund, your response to that again, preparing for post-high school education or work? Go ahead.
This is a topic that's often brought up in our community. And I think we need to ensure that our students, our children, are reading proficiently and that they know they have the life skills so they're able to thrive outside of schools. We need to start exposing our children and our students to vocational, technical, and trade schools early. And I'm thinking as early as elementary school. We have technical schools all throughout our county and colleges that we can start exposing our students to. We have Job Corps right here in St. Petersburg. Again, if we expose our students to the programs early, they will be more aware of the opportunities available to them. Our students are not reading proficient when they graduate, they are going to be behind. So again, making sure our students are reading proficiently and exposing them to the resources and programs that are available early.
All right, candidate Edmund, thank you so much. Candidate Givens, now the same question to you. How do you prepare high school students for education and beyond in the work world? Candidate Givens, go ahead. All right, we're having some technical difficulties with candidate Givens' camera right now. So let's go on to candidate Jackson. Are you there, candidate Jackson, and can talk about post-high school education or the work world? Go ahead.
So I think it's important to expose, to have an opportunity for these students who don't want to go to college to be exposed to different avenues of education. It could be going to a technical school or getting an internship with a company, life skills, learning life skills on the job. So I think that apprenticeships, make parents aware, parents and students aware of the technical opportunities out there. Sometimes there's a negative stigma about technical schools when really, a lot of those jobs like nursing, computer skills, plumbing, a lot of those jobs pay a lot more than college entry jobs, college exit jobs. So just communicating and letting the public know what's available out there in our technical schools and the work world. Thank you.
All right. And now we have candidate Long who is able to join us again because of some technical issues. And so candidate Long, let me give you an opportunity to respond to this question and then we'll work it out. So we're going to give you some time a little bit later to talk about a couple of these others' issues. But how would you propose that Pinellas County School System prepare students for post-high school education or work? You have a minute for this particular question, and then we'll work out the other details as we move out through the evening. Go ahead.
Okay, I think it needs to start in middle school where we start introducing them to the students to the options that are available. No child is the same. Some will choose the college path, some we hope will go to Pinellas Technical College. They can take a survey to find their skills and their abilities and mesh them nicely to find choices. Apprenticeships with the different areas, I know Tarpon Springs, their city works program has that. We need to guide our students throughout, starting in middle school, and expose them to the different options that are available to them. And doing that will help students make the right choice for themselves. We can't wait till high school. We've got to start early and then guide them along, and we will be much more successful.
All right, thank you so much. So let's move on to question number eight. We have eight questions for each of those candidates to answer. COVID has created the need to provide options for delivering education. This could create a significant increase in workload for teachers. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment? Candidate Long, we're going to let you go ahead and go first on that one. You have a minute to respond.
All right, well, one thing we're going to vote on next week is that students are being delayed till August 24th. But the first week, I think it's the 13th or the 17th, teachers will go back virtually and we will start training them. They have a week of that training, of planning and training, and then the next week, they go to their schools and in small group instruction where they're not all in one room, will be given some hands-on instruction. I think those two things, we have after-school classes, that they'll be paid stipends, and we need to prepare them before we decide to reopen our schools. I think that is absolutely vital because in March, when we went into this, they were not prepared. The platform we're going to use this time, Canvas, is much more interactive and will give them an opportunity to engage with their students where teams really didn't do that.
All right, thank you so much. Let's go on to candidate Nurse right now. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment thanks to COVID-19? Mr. Nurse, go ahead.
Well, to sort of continue with the current school board member who was just finished, I think the critical thing is we have to keep learning from our experience. I mean, when we started in the spring, it was on your market set, go. And we do have some time for planning, but even with the training that we're about to do, we're going to find that it's going to be a complicated experience, and we're going to have situations where we have to shut down classes and move kids who were bricks and mortar into virtual. So we need a loop, an information loop, that as we learn, that we bring this back to the other teachers so we don't have to individually all learn the hard knocks. It's going to be a challenge, and as long as we are flexible and adjust as we go, I think we'll be okay. But the future is very difficult to know precisely what's going to happen.
That's a good way of putting it. All right, candidate Edmund, if you would respond to that same question. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment? Go right ahead.
As a current educator, I know exactly how many of our educators and support professionals are feeling right now as it relates to reopening our school and trying to navigate this process. I think that we need to work with the teachers union as well as listen to our educators and support professionals first and foremost because there are a lot of things that we don't know. There are a lot of things that our board members aren't aware of as it relates to being in the classroom and how to best meet the needs of our students. So we need to get back to the basics of contacting and speaking with the people that are actually doing the work, and that's our educators and our administrators. We also need to make sure that we are providing the support that they ask for. Many people have questions about how are the needs of our ESE students or our students with special needs? How are those needs going to be met? Or how are the needs of our gifted learners are going to be met? Or even the students that don't like being on the computer for long lengths of time. Thank you.
All right, candidate Edmund, thank you so much. Candidate Givens, you're joining us back again. We're talking about teachers and increased workload for teachers. How would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment? Go ahead, you have a minute.
You know, I think it's great that we are empowering families with options and choices, but we needed to do the same for our teachers. You know, having been an educator, someone on both sides of the desk, both as a student and a teacher, I recognize that teachers are making some tough choices right now. I hosted a virtual forum with some teachers just to get their opinions on schools reopening. And there were half that were excited about going back, and the other half, you know, they fretted the decision, you know, because they have underlying conditions. But we definitely need to make sure that we listen to the advice of the medical professionals because they have the opinions of the experts, and that's what we should be listening to. We should be guided by the CDC and our local health department. But lastly, you know, it recently came out that the superintendent has agreed that we should push the start date back for school. Well, I have some concerns and questions about that as well. You know, if teachers' start date for going back to work is being delayed by two weeks, well, that's two weeks' worth of pay that they're going to be missing. And a lot of people who aren't 12-month employees, they're 10-month employees, they've been waiting on that money, and they have mortgages, bills, daycare, just like everyone else. And we need to make sure that they can meet their demands and get their bills paid.
All right, thank you very much. And candidate Jackson, on that same question, how would you support teachers in this newly diverse educational environment? Go ahead, you have a minute.
Okay, I think that teachers need to be supported 100% because some of them are probably afraid of the online platform. So they need to be trained and provided ongoing professional development to ensure that they are comfortable with the delivery method. We need to prepare them on the platform and show them how to use it because really, the platform can be set up that's similar to a classroom and make it inviting and engaging. Giving the teachers access, giving teachers options to return to work whether they want to do the online or go back into the classroom. Be considerate about what they're going through and the underlying health conditions that may exist, as well as how to reach all of our students, not just our regular students, and how to engage the parents as well in the process.
All right, so we are at the end of those eight questions, and let's go ahead and do this. I'm kind of talking to our host right here. If we can get Eileen Long back on before we make our closing statements, let me just have a quick conversation with Eileen on some of these other topics that she missed, and we'll move it along, but at least it's going to give her an opportunity to say something. Eileen, thank you. So let's just start out with a couple of the questions that you missed. Bullying in the classroom. What kind of resources are available to teachers and students to help them try to decrease the amount of bullying that goes on in terms of communication skills?
Pinellas County Schools has implemented the restorative practice. We have not 100% completely brought it into our schools COVID hit, but I think it's very important to work with teachers to learn communication skills. In my opinion, communication with your students is the number one most important thing. We have to learn how to properly listen, build relationships with our students, and unless we build relationships and we can then identify, I mean, I could see when a child was being bullied. I have over 33 years' teaching experience, and I work with ESE and dropout prevention. You can see the signs, and we need to make teachers aware. And don't look the other way and say it's someone else's responsibility to report it. Each and every adult needs to take responsibility and help.
And let me go on to another subject that we talked about that you weren't able to participate. Racial inequality within the school system and increased student achievement levels that are affected by racial and economic disparities. How would you work to try to reduce the achievement gap, as it's being called?
Well, one of the things that we've just done is Pinellas County Schools has ordered 40,000 laptops. Every child from first to 12th grade will be given a Pinellas County-issued laptop. So if a family of four has four different students, they obviously need four different laptops. So we're going to provide that. We are now turning, instead of teams, we're going to Canvas, which lets a teacher interact with their students more, and I really am pleased that the district has listened. I have been pushing parent education. If parents do not know how to use the computer or how to work the platform, they're the ones at home with their students. How can they help? So we need to engage the parents and have, we need to go out into the communities, do small group instruction, and help parents learn. That way, they can go home and work with their child, and that will ensure more consistency and the student will have a better opportunity with the laptops.
And just a lightning round question for you. You're familiar with the November referendum to continue the school district's special property tax that bolsters teacher pay and arts programs. We asked everybody if they supported that referendum. Do you support it?
100%.
Good. Well, okay, great. Eileen, thank you. So we're back on track right now. Now just take a breath because we're going to go to the one-minute closing remarks. And again, we're going to start out with candidate Long in just a second, just to remind you again that the other person that she is facing chose not to be part of the program tonight. If you are in District Four, it'll appear on your ballot, and you will have the choice between Mr. Hardman and candidate Long. Candidate Long from District Four, go ahead, you have one minute for your closing statement. You may begin.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all for voting last time to put me on the school board. This has been a wonderful four years. I have over 33 years' experience in our Pinellas County Schools. I have children in the district, and my husband is a teacher. I had the first year of a learning curve. I am now feeling very confident. I feel that I'm out in the community every day. This is not a part-time job. This is a dedication. I get up and get started by eight in the morning, and I'm usually not done till 11:00. I'm talking to teachers, I have an open policy, and to parents and the community. I am always here, always willing to engage, always willing to listen. So on August 18th, I hope you will put me back. I am passionate. I love this. I love doing what I'm doing, and I believe that I can help bring our district to be the best district in Pinellas, in the state of Florida.
All right, Eileen, thank you so much for your time. And sorry, we had some problems with the technical side of things, but got it worked out right now. So now let's move on to the candidates that are in District Seven. There are four of them. You'll be voting for one of those. And again, if nobody receives 50% plus one vote, then the two top vote-getters in District Seven will be moving on to the final ballot on November the 3rd. So let's start out with candidate Edmund. You have one minute now for your closing statement. Again, this is for District Seven. Candidate Edmund, you may begin.
Thank you very much for providing this opportunity for me to answer some questions. I have a master's degree in educational leadership, a master's in elementary education, a bachelor's degree in psychology, and a certification in infant family mental health. For over 18 years, I've had the joy of serving and working with children and families as it relates to education, from working with youth in foster care, providing respite through park, and now as an educator working in our Transformation Zone School right here in District Seven. My commitment to education and my consistency is evident in my work. I serve on various boards in the community, and I'm actively engaged in meeting with parents, educators, and students as it relates to educational issues and how we can improve. On or before August 18th, vote for me, Caprice Edmund. You can visit my website at edmundforeducation.com. Thank you.
Caprice, thank you so much. Let's move on to our next candidate now. Candidate Jackson, you have one minute for your closing statement. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
All right, thank you. I'm Sharon Jackson, and I'm a candidate for Pinellas County School Board in District Seven. I have a vested interest in achievement and learning outcomes of all schools, especially those that are unperforming. I've served in Pinellas County Schools as a teacher, school counselor, assistant principal, principal, and taught at the collegiate level. And I understand the challenges the school district is facing, as well as our communities. My platform is excellence, equity, and engagement in classrooms in our schools, always putting students first when decisions are made by the district. I'm an experienced, qualified, and proven leader and ready to utilize my skills as your next school board member. I'm asking for your vote on or before August 18th. Vote Sharon Jackson for school board in District Seven. My website is sharonjacksonforschoolboard.com, the number four. Thank you.
And thank you. And now we'll go to candidate Carl Nurse. Carl, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you. Let me do something a little different. Let me tell you what the St. Petersburg Times or Tampa Bay Times editorial board said when they recommended me. They said Carl Nurse has the business experience and an outsider's perspective that the school board needs. He's best known for the 10 years he spent on the St. Petersburg City Council, where he was a reasonable and smart voice, much needed as the city clawed its way out of the Great Recession. He developed a reputation for turning ideas into action. Nurse owns a successful printing business with nearly 50 employees and has been actively involved in the community for decades, including the Council of Neighborhood Associations, the City Planning Commission, Living Green Expo. He's currently a board member of the Local Habitat for Humanity branch and is a strong advocate for affordable housing. I say that because I'm a little uncomfortable bragging about myself, but I am prepared to work hard on the first day, and the Times says I will be the most effective school board member. Ask for your vote. Thank you.
All right, Carl, thank you so much. And finally, in District Seven, candidate Givens, you have one minute for your closing statement. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not a career politician, but I'm a public servant, and for me, this race is personal. As an educator, a community activist, and a businessman, I care deeply about the future of this city. That's the reason I'm going to take my one minute to let you know that it's a shame that the Tampa Bay Times endorsed someone who has no track record in education, no track record in helping children south of Central, and no track record in being invested in District Seven, at least in the lives of our students. So you need to send someone to the school board who cares deeply about our students, our teachers, and their families. Someone who has over a decade of experience working in our schools, both as a volunteer and as a teacher. Someone who believes that if we work together, we can change this broken system. My name is Corey Givens Jr., and I'm part of you and from you, a product of Pinellas and a son of St. Pete, and I'm asking for your vote. Send me to be your voice in Largo on District Seven and the school board. Vote for me, Corey Givens. Visit me online for more information about my new ideas and new solutions for saving our schools at www.corygivens.com. Thank you.
All right, candidates, thank you so much. And you know, this is my round of applause for all of you. This is the new normal, and this is really tough to do, but you, candidates, you handled it really well, and of just a few technical goofs along the way, but... goofs along the way. But I don't know whether this is the new normal. I don't know if it feels normal, but this is the new. And this is what it is. And as a form of communication, we're still talking to each other, asking each other's questions, and, and that's what this is all about. So I'd like to all, again, thank all the candidates who participated. I appreciate their dedication and service to our county. If you want to get humble, run for office sometime, and it will humble you like nothing you have ever known before. But the voice of the people is so important if they're heard. I hope that you will honor their dedication by participating in our democracy. And please, please, please vote in the primary. Make sure that you and your family members have a voting plan. You can find out more information on the candidates in the nonpartisan Pinellas Voter Guide. A recording this forum with closed captioning will also be available at the League of Women Voters St. Petersburg's Facebook and YouTube sites in approximately one week. And I just want to say this, after hosting this and then last night hosting the school board event, you know, one thing that my wife said to me, she said, when you were watching the school board members and, and the school officials, you were saying to yourself, you know what? We're all human beings, and this is all brand-new for us, everything that we're facing. And so yes, there are gonna be some bumps along the way. And yes, people are doing their best to make the best decisions they can, trying to be as safe as possible, and remembering their obligation to educate your children, but also keep them safely. But there are likely gonna be some bumps along the way. So one thing they've asked for is flexibility. And I hope that we, as a community, will have the flexibility to support our teachers, our students, our parents, and our community members as we work our way through COVID-19. And hopefully, we get by this thing and never have anything happen like this again. All right, sounds good. I'm Al Rochelle. Thank you so much for your time. Ms. Jackson, how about closing out the evening for us?
We hope you had a good evening, learning about the important issues facing our community, and you have a better understanding of the respective candidates' positions on each issue. We want to thank you again for joining us in this virtual platform, and invite you again to watch our Facebook page. ISPS serves as a convenor in the community. We do programs with our congressmen, with local politicians, with arts programs, and also with nonprofit organizations. It's our goal to enhance the community and to work with you collectively. Thank you again, and have a wonderful night.